Morning, everybody.
Morning, all of you.
All right, it's March 28, 2023, regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County. We do have business for the court. This record show that Commissioner Pitt Byers here with us, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Karbowski, and Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of Zoom. Good morning, Leon.
What's up?
All right. Just want to make sure you can hear us and see us, okay? All right. And we do have business for the court, and we're getting close to the end of March. So March Madness is about over, right? Okay. Sorry about UT there, Dwayne, but they just couldn't make it past the hurdle. Don't say anything about the Aggies, it's okay. Sorry. You can get even next year. All right. Okay. We have, let's see, first thing, Lee, if you'd lead us in the place this morning, Matthew's gonna lead us in the other case.
Please face the American flag.
Y'all pray with me. Father God, we come here and we thank you so much for this day. We'll thank you for all the many wonderful things in our life, all the good that is in our life, all the good that is kind of community in county, for we know that all good comes from you. We ask that you please be with the elected officials here, commissioners, and making decisions that are good for our community as a whole. And Father God, we also lift up the first responders and peace officers. We ask that you please protect them, as they protect us. And Father God, we ask you keep your hand on us, guide us in wisdom and truth, patience and humility, but all love. We proudly serve you holy name. Amen.
Okay, thank you. All righty. We do have some notices and proclamations this morning. Have one with the American Red Cross, also with Bridge Haven and also declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month. So tell you what, I'm gonna walk down front, and it's Red Cross folks or the Red Cross folks here. Hey, come on up. We'll visit in a minute.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Make sure you jump over that hurdle right there. You can see it. What's your name again?
Justin Smith.
Justin Smith, all right. Just want to make sure we go through. Mason's gonna ask me that later on. I have these no two days. All right. And I want to make sure Greg appears. Justin Smith, you got that, okay. We'll make sure. It's American Red Cross, but 2023. Whereas during American Red Cross Month of March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Liberty County. Texas and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one visits the cross alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our beginning, except inside by the people of Liberty County, Texas. People have some problems and we need to provide help and hope, people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Martin. We found the organization born 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand, but it's extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort, families displaced by wildfires or disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, people with sick or self-diseases, and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers. Through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, delivering international military aid, and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this kind of unmarked, we not really laid a purpose, we just get there and get back. In honor of all those who feel fulfilled our marks and words, you must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join this committee. Now therefore, I change my delivery. I virtue the authority vested in me by the laws of Liberty County State of Texas, here at Brooklyn, March 2023, in a Red Cross month. For all citizens of Liberty County, reach out and support its humanitarian mission, and witness thereof in the sign of this day, 28th day of March, 2023. Thank y'all again for all you've created. Whenever we do have crisis, and we have had plenty of, y'all always come to the rescue, literally, as we thank you for it. We always try to our best to have a place for you. A lot of times you end up spending many, many nights at our town building and other places. You know, churches with the church groups that also join together and work. Yours is not an easy job, but y'all have an organization. You've really done well in branching out to other areas on our side of Harris County, and thank you for that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So if y'all didn't know, they have a new location of Lufkin, where it's a safety area for Red Cross. And after, I think it was Harvey, and then it came through, we had a significant problem getting the units and services from Red Cross to us in Liberty County. Because, well, as Leon and I were watching the radar when Harvey came in, it passed, you remember, they came up the coast, and it came up, well, basically just right into Harris County. And we were talking to him, watched the radar. I said, what happened was everybody had gone to Corpus now that direction. And then you had to try to lead it back to Harris County to work there. And once you got to Harris County, it became out. And you didn't get Liberty County. But then y'all worked through that, and you established the location of Lufkin. So here's our good deal. When it floods, Highway 146 does not flood. Think about that. They can get it for Lufkin without having to swim. Pretty good deal. So thank y'all for that. Appreciate it. And it's getting that season. I'm not gonna be able to say the H-word, but it's getting that season again, so let's continue working together. And thank you so much. Another proclamation. Whereas we all have the responsibilities, individuals, members, committee members, citizen, and Liberty County, in Liberty County, to help create healthy, safe, nurturing experiences for children. And whereas more than 200,000 children in Texas, our report is abused and neglected every year. Whereas saving, healthy childhood is helping produce confident and successful adults. Whereas child abuse is neglected often occurs, thank you. When people find themselves in stressful situations without many resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas majority of child abuse cases stem from situation conditions that are preventable, in an engagement or a meeting. And whereas child abuse is neglected, it's been reduced by making sure that the families has support they need to serve closer children in a healthy environment. Whereas it is recognized that no one person can do everything, that everyone can do something. Together, we can really change the better. Whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. So now therefore, being known that the Liberty County judge, we hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Liberty County, to urge all citizens to engage in activity to strengthen families, babies, to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive, so that all children have the ability to happy, healthy, safe childhoods, as well as a month that remembers for all children and families in Liberty County whose lives have been impacted by UCF neglect. In the sign of this day, and the Commissioners Court. Thank you. And let me get your names, everybody can get it right.
Karen Curly.
Karen. How you spell that last name?
K E A R L Y.
Got that correct. K E A R L Y. All right. Now you're with Bridge Haven, right?
I am, yes.
Tell us a little bit about Bridge Haven.
Several. Bridge Haven is a nonprofit organization that serves the children of Liberty and Chambers County. And we work with law enforcement, CPS, and all those organizations together. We're kind of the middleman that helps the children through the process, because all those different agencies can be intimidating at times. And I help the children through, and the families through that process. We also provide services for the families and the children that are in need.
Okay. And your offices located where?
We are in Bacon right now.
Okay. You were on North Winfrey at one time.
Yes, but we have two offices, one on North Winfrey, and then we have an office on Oak Street.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, Bobby, I know you work quite a bit. It's probably Matthew, Catherine. Make sure that the ex-husband's working as well.
Yes.
And leave the work, please. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything y'all do.
Yes.
All right. And look, you have this.
Thank you.
All right.
Not yet.
At least you can get a rope back.
And a bottle of water.
That's right. Thank you, ma'am. And this Stand Up For Children proclamation, declaring April 2023 as something we should all think about every day. I'll just get them out there. Whereas child abuse is a major cause of preventable violence and death among children in Liberty County is an ever-increasing problem in today's society warrants the heightened awareness about this county's population. Whereas child abuse can take the form of physical abuse, sexual abuse, and/or neglect. Whereas all citizens can stop child abuse in Liberty County not being concerned about health safety and our neighborhood insurance by calling 1-800-252-5400. Did you get that, please?
Yes.
Okay. 1-800-252-5400. Almost like Bill began, you did it three times, you had to give the number. Report suspected child abuse. National Child Abuse Prevention Month is the time to make their struggle our own and reaffirm a simple truth, that caring for the most vulnerable in our society must always be our first consideration. Whereas we commend all the agencies in Liberty County who work tirelessly to prevent child abuse and care for the victims of child abuse. Now therefore, be it Resolute Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas, this hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, in the sign of this day, 28th of March, 2023. So.
Yes, the child welfare.
Okay. Are y'all here? Child welfare board? Anyone?
I'm an advisor, but I'm one of the children.
I owe to the.
Advisor checks.
You know, the deal is, not that I'm an expert on child welfare, I mean, across the Bridge Haven, and then the child welfare, too. And there's something going on across the body. You know, call Bobby. Bobby takes the phone call. I know Matthew will. I'm sure that Mr. Parker will take the call. And I know we will. All you gotta do is pick the phone up and say, I see something. It's right. This takes a moment. Make a big difference in someone's life. And all we can do is take care of kids, because they're next, next to the generations. So let's do that, okay? Y'all pray for these agencies as well. They do work with the county, with the cities. I'm sure the state's is large, made, pretty far and healthy. Okay. Moving right along, public comments. Had no one sign up for public comments today, so before being done, we'll move on to the next item. Declare conflicts of interest. Does anyone on the court have the conflict to declare? Number 18. Okay, Dave. Commissioner Whitmire, let's stand on number 18.
And Judge, I would like to forward the letter and notify you of public disclosure that I'm making in accordance with Texas Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 2256, Section 2256.005, paragraph 8. And you'll have a copy of that letter. I'll also provide a copy of that letter to the Texas Department of Exemission today, so you'll know.
Thank you. You got all that?
They may have to read it to me, though. I'm giving it a letter. No, I don't think this could be.
That was as eloquent as it could be about her saying that she can't talk about it. All right. Moving right along, next consent agenda. Dwayne, we have any add-ons today?
Two.
Two, okay.
Got one payment from Xerox, around $118.85. And I have a budget amendment from Bridge for sink two. It's moving $100,000 out of King of Grant, a mile out to Capital. This is money that Hunter, on his King of Grant, was money that he did work on in prior years. He received the money last year, in person, and we put it in the issue in Friday.
All right. Anything else? Anything to add?
Not today, Judge.
Harold, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Motion for approved consent agenda, along with two additions.
Got a motion for Bruce, second to Greg, to approve consent agenda with the additions. Is there any discussion? Being done, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, on the regular agenda. Consider approving the selection of Liberty County Depository Bank related contract terms begin June 1, 2023. Harold, come on up and discuss this with us just a little bit. Maybe more, just a little bit.
Yeah, it's time for a new postscript contract. So we advertise, we receive the proposals from Fertile Rebank and, I'm sorry, Fertile Rebank, Fertile Rebank, National Bank, and Prosperity Bank, received Thursday, so you obviously have a momentum today, so I know you had time to prove, unfortunately. What you have is several pages of contractual requirements where they answer certain questions. Both banks answer the questions. Then there's two, a two-year or four-year proposal. You can do whichever one you want with a rate sheet that they show on there. And then there's a bank service charge, because the last sheet that y'all have. Yeah, this is the Commissioner Court's responsibility or whatever, to award it.
It's a pretty good word.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't deal with our banking, and I make sure our contract says the foreign rates and all that. So I don't feel I'm qualified to recommend anyone. But y'all could, as a recommendation, y'all could interview each one, and explain their proposal to everyone. I have no recommendation on it.
Can I make a suggestion? You just got this Thursday. I had that time, because Friday was, everybody was off. Let's have, give us a week to review or so, and we can bring it back up. Is this a timely matter, Kim, that we just have to do it today, or?
I don't think you would have to do it today. Our current depository contract with Spirit Atlantic is starting 9/3.
Okay.
So just.
We might, you know, we can possibly get the two institutions to come in even during the executive session, have a chat if we need to. I'd like everybody to have the opportunity.
So the court is aware, Marshall is born with Spirit Bank is in the courtroom today, and also Kelly Stretcher and Mark Heimer are here, the first three representatives from both banks are here today. If you have any questions for them today, I'm sure they'd be happy to help you out with that, or workshop.
Yeah, Kelly, Marshall, y'all wouldn't mind coming back if we get the opportunity to look over this. It's a long walk for y'all. I get, yeah, okay. Yeah, if we would, I'd ask y'all to table this until we can have the opportunity.
I agree with you. I'd like to have a chance to walk over. We table it, we'll talk about it till the next second.
Got a motion. Greg tabled, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Leon, I can't see you. There you are. Aye?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was passion, actually. Thank y'all very much. And we will table this and bring it back up as soon as we can, okay? And Kelly, thank y'all for coming in. Marshall, good to see you. Okay. Just so y'all know that, you know, banker's hours do not start at nine. I know they've been here, they've been around since about 7:30 this morning, okay? Number two, from our fire marshal, and Matt, you're here, and Bill's here. Hey, Bill, you're looking well this morning. Come on in. Number two is consider approving order authorizing San Jacinto Day fireworks sales for Liberty County beginning April the 16th through April 21st. And that's, it's just, I guess we have fireworks every holiday now, right?
It's about, yeah. The state events, you know, that we have to vote on it, so it's like a community.
Okay.
No, it's a good event.
No sticks and fends, yes. Matthew, that okay with you?
That's totally fine.
All right. Same rule, the Jim Wilson rule. Leon, is that all right?
It has worked.
Okay. Need a motion to approve that we'll authorize this with the exception of sticks and fends. A motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from, I'll give Leon that second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, considering approving the resolution authorizing the submittal of a 2023, 2024 Texas Community Development Block Grant application to the Texas Department of Agriculture committing matching funds, evidently agreeing to comply with programmatic requirements in adopting or reaffirming civil rights policies. Caitlin, are you here today?
I am.
If you would, please come on up and visit with us. Caitlin Brown, well, tell us what your position is, as far as we're concerned on this.
Absolutely. Caitlin Brown, Traylor and Associates, and we are the grant administration firm working with the county and with the Water Control District, number five, on the preparation and submittal of this grant application. And we work, we kind of administer and manage the entire grant and all of the financial benchmarks, as well as the engineering and construction costs.
Okay. And this resolution is part of the.
Is required.
Required, yeah.
Yes, sir. So this is requiring approval to submit the application. And so we're in the process of gathering everything and preparing and finalizing it. And so once this resolution is passed, then we will have the application available for the county's review and for the county's comment. And then the county would actually be the one that would be pressing submit on the button. It's an online application this year.
Okay. Matthew, you have anything we need to discuss about this, being a resolution that's gonna?
Other than, it sounds like all this is doing is authorizing them to start the application, permitting us to follow the law, the federal and city laws, to deal with this. But then it still gives us, or the Commissioners Court, the ability to say, yes, put it on the later date.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And if I can, just to remind the court that on this commitment of matching funds, you have an existing memorandum of understanding with the Water Control District. And so they are the ones that will be paying that $10,000 local match, so it will not be financial match from the county.
That sound good, Dwayne. Paying $10,000, come on. All right, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you. All righty. Number four, don't sit down yet. We've still got a little bit left. Consider approving a resolution designating representatives in matters pertaining to the county's participation in the Texas Community Block Grant Program. Okay, Caitlin?
Yes, so this is a resolution that authorizes the county judge, as well as the auditor and treasurer, to look over any billing and as the invoices come, to approve those invoices to be paid to the engineer contractor, et cetera.
Well, you picked two good ones to theme review, that they're the auditor and the treasurer.
Where they can work is acknowledge, they'll submit to Commissioners Court, for the federal court, for the draw. And then after the county pays the money, we will pay them within the true range.
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg, to approve. Any further discussion? There being none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Katie, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming today. Number five, Mr. Douglas. Consider approving proposed procedure for numbering of private roads. This procedure is in response to recent changes in the way the Central Appraisal District assigns the 911 addresses. David, have we finally picked a winner?
Yes, sir. We've been round and round. I had an opportunity to visit with Commissioner Wilson about some of his concerns. We've also visited with the Fire Marshal, Mr. Huber Miller, and I've been to talk a little bit with Mr. Karbowski this morning about this. So I think we punched all the buttons in the right sequence, finally, the sign of this tape that you last made.
Right.
But we have a full man now that CAD has been working, and we're comfortable with. What it basically will entail is that we will identify a request for private road, and we'll identify the nearest existing county. We will take that number hypothetically, let's just say County Road 133 North. And 133 North on a joint private road will become 133 O'Land. And so this allows the first responders to know which precinct is in immediately. It settles their minds, so it allows my function properly now. We don't have to be in hole or daisies looking for a driveway. And I got to apologize to all of those commissioners, because I've been, I've been using you guys' formulas to help me locate this stuff. And they've been great to work with, but they have a lot of stuff in there plugged.
Right.
And so today, we're going to ask you to approve this procedure as shown in your documents for the day. And then we'll move forward with the CAD. I got two private roads requests on my desk this morning.
Bill, you happy with this? I'm tickled dead with it. Bobby?
Yeah, deal here, I'm working on that. What he said is, is the best option that I've seen. Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second, Greg. Any further discussion? Leon is okay?
Worked.
It works? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no.
Thank you, Dave.
That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six. Consider approve proposal from my McDowell for repairs and improvements to the Dayton Annex Building in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. We have been needing to do some repairs out there for a while, and, uh, we're to the point to where when I start getting about three phone calls a week, that's three phone calls too many, so.
Well, I've had bids back from twenty twenty, and it's just doing nothing. Going up and the building is
Going down.
Going down.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, consider approve Jen Spencer and Lisa Smith positions on the Liberty County Housing Board for two-year terms to end three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, and they've agreed to serve again. So, uh, that's what our that's what our job is to place people on the board. We don't have any governing power there. That being said.
We're approving.
Leon had a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight from Mr. Brown, our tax assessor collector. Come on up, Rick.
Yes, sir.
Astros aren't playing till Thursday. We, we still got work. Yeah.
Lost a game this season.
I know. Hadn't lost one yet. Consider approve the overpay refund in the amount of two thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars eighty-three cents for account number one nine eight three sixty. That's, uh, customer's double, double RW Ranch.
Yes, sir. Um, that was the twenty-five eighty-three, so I don't have to do that.
Yes, sir. Twenty-eight ninety-nine.
Yeah, that, they paid twice, so.
Okay.
Unlike Bill, he didn't like to pay it once, but this guy wanted to pay it twice so much that we're going to give him one of them back, so.
He can always call Mattress Mac and put that on a bet for the Astro.
Yeah. Five thousand, I think you got to cover.
Oh, that's a cover, okay.
You got to go five, five, yeah.
What's court's pleasure?
Make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion from Leon.
Aye.
Second from Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Let's see, Rick, we got consider, number nine, consider approve overpay refund in amount of five thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars eighty-seven cents for account number five three zero eight four. The customer is Dorothy Maddens.
Yes.
Yes.
And this happens quite a bit, especially when you have a, a mortgage escrow. And, uh, they send all these payments in usually around November, December, and then the customer says, oh, I'm gonna pay it. Well, again, we don't charge but once, so we're, we're going to refund this Dorothy, her money because the, uh, mortgage had already paid it. So we're twenty-five hundred, so Texas courts approve.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion Leon, second from Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten. Consider approve overpay refund the amount of two thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars thirteen cents for account number two three eight five seven. Customer is Amaco Federal Credit.
Yeah, what happened on this one is this the opposite. The actual customer paid first and then the credit union paid after. So, again, whoever creates the refund is who we send the check back to. So in this case, the credit union will get the refund. They'll figure out how to add it back up after the deals, but, uh, that, that creates, either when the customer pays last, we give it to them, but now by, by statute, we, we turn it to the credit union. So, again, it's over twenty-five hundred, but Texas courts.
Make a motion, we approve.
Aye.
Motion Leon, second from Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Brother Nick. Appreciate it. Number eleven from, uh, Precinct One. Consider and approve construction covered deck and steps to be built on the east side of county building located at four ten Main Street in Dayside, Texas. Bruce, what we're going to build today?
One of two, uh, awnings and deckings that we're putting on the, uh, JT two's office. This is for the law enforcement entrance. It's a total of forty-two hundred dollars, a deposit of twenty-one hundred. Uh, recommend that we go ahead and do this, uh, be ADA compliance.
Yeah.
But I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Greg, second from, uh, David. Any further discussion?
Is, uh, this, this contractor related, or, or y'all planning on doing that, Bruce?
No, sir. It's, uh, G E M Construction out of Cleveland, Texas. Uh, we've been, just Cody has been a contractor before out at, uh, Cody Creditch's place. We went out for several bids and, uh, this was the cheapest one that we could get. McDowell bid also, but he couldn't get to it. And he was, it was probably quite a bit higher than what this G E M. I'm not familiar with the construction company. I didn't talk to him. Uh, Judge Belt did and brought it for, or toward, for me to, uh, put on Commissioners Court.
He met Judge Belt to be watching him. Yes. Okay, we got a motion, Greg, second from David, to approve. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, uh, consider and approve the construction of covered deck, wheelchair ramp and steps to be built on county building seventy feet by twenty-eight feet located at four oh one Main Street in Dayside, Texas. And again, this is, uh, on the same building, just a different little location there.
This is a public, public entrance is what it is.
Okay, got a motion from David. I'm sorry, yeah.
I was waiting to hand over some of that, I pay ten thousand seven hundred eighty dollars thirty.
Right. It's awesome.
Pretty good, so. In the motion I made, pretty funny.
Yeah. Matthew, is there any problem with that addition in the motion?
No.
David, you want to make your motion?
For a pretty big. Right in the mouth, quite safe.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
Got a second from Leon. Any further discussion? And now, will this just about finish up? JP two?
I hope so.
About the parking lot, how's it looking?
That's what's probably next.
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, we're just going to put some rock out there.
Okay, thank you. All right, got a motion, second, no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, consider and approve in local agreement by between Liberty County Precinct One and the City of Liberty to cooperate mutually and maintain streets, roads, and and ditches and recreational areas to provide better service to the public and reduce expense by avoiding duplication of equipment and manpower and other resources. Your standard.
Renewal of last year.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion from David, second from Greg. Further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Let's see, Harold, number fourteen is yours. Consider and approve workers' compensation renewal with Deep East Texas Self Insurance Fund beginning April the first of twenty twenty-three.
Have we any bid back on this?
No, we did not.
We did not.
No, we didn't. We decided, or I think, Chris, we discussed it earlier. We had, we paid or to the health insurance. This is such a huge change. They're not throwing anything new on the trailer's office this year. Uh, I think they should definitely show you. Deep East Texas, we're also a tool like Tac, so we're a member of it, so. Uh, Ben Oden was going to try to be on, uh, get a meeting at the same time. But if you look on the second page, what I just gave you, he explained, uh, for Deep East Texas, we, three, for three years, we had a guaranteed, we pay the same, same premium. Our payroll has been going up steadily and which normally would make you pay more each year because it's based on the payroll. But we pay the same thing for three years. That ends this current year. So what, what he did, and what he shows on the first page is what we currently have. And then he said, with the rates that we currently have and the payroll we currently have, which went up, they said forty-one percent.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just like on our health insurance, you know, a little, quite a bit. Uh, this is what our rates would be, uh, renew would be like five hundred and eighteen thousand. But there's a rate, uh, reduction, so it's eleven percent overall for the workers' comp for the, for the new year. So our, it's still about a hundred thousand dollar increase, but it's four fifty. There it was, four fifty-eight, one, four fifty, forty-seven, right? I need more glasses, I can't breathe it. So anyway, so they've been real good to us as far as, like I said, we shouldn't have been paying more for the last two years, and we didn't have to. Uh, he said nobody's offering the three-year guarantee anymore. And so this will be for one year, uh, renewal.
Okay. Dwayne, do you think? Is what it is, pretty much. Kim, feel good with it?
I would just say that, uh, well, that's the decision of the court, but I would say you know, that Mary Berry or in my office, um, feels with all of the first conference, and she doesn't really do a good job with that, and Deep East Texas has been really easy to work with.
Okay.
Always working. Um. We can sell it and play with no language with it. We do have a few workers' comp.
Okay, Matthew, so you think that you need to throw an exclamation point in there about.
Now, now it's within the, uh, the courts.
Yep.
Finding us from. Austin.
Maybe our outside.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Okay. All righty, uh, says considering approved. Is there need a motion and a second? Motion Greg, second from Leon. Do we have any discussion? Any further? Leon, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. David, thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Billy. Thank you, Harold. Sit down, yes. Got a bunch more. Uh, number fifteen, consider and approve the sheriff's vehicles to be declared as surplus property. And authorize the auction or trade-in of listed vehicles.
Okay, Mr. Hendrick worked really hard. All those vehicles that aren't being used, uh, have high mileage, are running it off. So he prepared the list that should be in your package. Uh, the vehicles he wants to get rid of, and if y'all can declare them as surplus or salvage property, uh, and allow them to use it as a trade-in on any other vehicles they get in the future, or they want to trade in the list to an auction just to get rid of them.
What do you think with the records, John?
They will take them as an auction sometimes.
Yeah.
If not, I was going to ask if we added it to be scrapped, because if they don't take it, then we're still stuck with it.
I mean, motorola should be good in some of those that it just, the nose was messed up, the bed was messed up, whatever, and
They'll take them for parts when they can, but there's a couple of them that have really been stripped down and nothing left of them.
Yeah.
That if we don't talk to them, I don't know if it's too late to add the word scrap or all off to get rid of.
Yeah.
It's amazing what people, when you do auction stuff, but they'll come pick it up.
I know, yeah. Matthew, was there anything we need to be concerned about?
Well, I mean, the way this is listed is it's going to limit you to declaring a portion of these as surplus and offer, uh, authorize an auction.
I'd like to be able to clean up that mess over there if you can, yes.
Um.
Well, if you can auction, if you can, uh, trade in or whatever, we can break it back up, scrap them.
Yeah, yeah. I think that would be those, if we can't, then, uh,
The ones that don't go to auction will be considered as scrap and then we'll.
They put those in their footback, we'll need it, yeah.
All right. That sound good, Leon?
Sounds good.
John, okay? So good.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, consider and approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos from Sillsby Ford for ninety thousand sixty-two dollars forty cents. Utilize the buy board contract number five two one sixteen.
Yeah, somehow a few here and there keep popping up.
Yeah.
A bunch at one time, but you've had a few over the last, Mr. Hendrick found this one. It's three buy boards.
This is from the sheriff?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce.
How many more do we need to buy?
How many?
How many more vehicles in the original budget?
Are we, how many we got to be processed, John?
Already processed?
Uh, yeah, how many, how many they working on the shop that we haven't got back yet? Uh, six.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Uh, one quick question, Sheriff. I don't ever get to talk to you very much about that, but y'all are going to move here pretty soon, how your administrative office is, correct?
Correct.
What do you think the timeline is on that?
Get us all moved over there. Yesterday, the meeting we had, it's based on motorola moving, I was wondering if things could be the second week in May.
Okay. Did your steel come in for your tower yet? Radio tower?
Yeah, yeah, radio tower, uh, Chief Knox is handling that, and I understand everything's in the working, going to go. We're supposed to have the metal delivered sometime, I think, this first of this next month.
Okay. That's a little ahead of time, isn't it?
Uh, uh, yes, if I'm thinking, it'll be April when they start delivering some metal.
Okay. All right. I'm just wondering, I'm not trying to get rid of you from over there, but I'm just kind of curious, you know, where.
It's kind of separate to locations, because I'm still over here.
Yes, oh, yeah, I know. And surely doesn't go till you go, so. That works, okay.
Sure, it's kind of scary, Judge, is that, you know, we've got several people, commissioned officers over there at times, and I'm the only commissioned officer being Sergeant Hendrick or the dispatcher, so you can imagine how well guarded they are.
Yes, sir. I figure they've done pretty good.
That's all.
Yeah, all right, okay. Now I'm just curious, you know, so and the, one of the big questions is going to be, you know, when y'all finally move and we can clean up over there.
That's right.
Because the next stage.
Container's gone.
Container's gone, yeah.
Get that old jail torn out and get all the evidences out.
Yeah.
Is, is container, yeah?
We're, we're working, we're working on getting it all cleaning up as we're kind of moving out, Judge.
Yes, sir.
With, uh, or then then move over, it should be kind of straight, since we're going to be using the first season, they'll clean up.
Since he's got a crew, so they're not doing anything anyway.
By the way, Mr. Our evidence is all in the whole building now.
Yeah.
Except we need to get into the south ward, I'll have to get Mr. Birch to do that.
Yes, sir. Okay. So maybe by late June, early July, you might be pretty much
Yes, sir.
Over there, okay. All right. We're just looking, you know, at the timeline so we can try to make, uh, plans for some, a little bit of rehab on your old office, you know, so when we start doing some moves there. And then, uh, and clean up all the vehicles that are sitting around there.
That's, well, that's, some of these that y'all recruited, some of the vehicles that are back in that yard, but I think that because, uh, Stephanie's been working with the Sardium, I think they found they still lack a couple of titles or one title, Sardium.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, get the title, and then, then we can get rid of them.
Okay. And then the evidence in the old jail.
Is gone.
It's gone. How about the old truck in there? Is it still?
That's, well, that's why we need, we don't have a key to that car, so we're going to get with Mr. Birch to get in there. And that's brought up even yesterday, we were over there going through.
Yes.
Yes, that needs to be, I don't know if it was awarded to us, we gotta get in there, get the bin number and, uh. The stuff, all of it, to run it through to see if it was awarded to us or what the case.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah.
We, uh, transfer, automatic transfer, generate.
Yeah, that switch is in there too, that's an indoor switch, so.
You're like throwing there, all those ones we call the bond guard at the bottom of the hill, they're not police cars, Martin, or sheriff's person. Procedure cars of some sort, some of them are still tied up with the county or not county, so the district attorney's office. Has the, or the paperwork is still not completed in the court, they said, and not been solved. So some of that won't be gone away, but we are definitely working on the rest of it.
And the reason I'm asking is I get phone calls from time to time from the public.
Yeah.
And it looks like y'all are running a used car lot.
Yeah.
Just kinda like to, aesthetics mean a lot, you know?
Pick apart.
Yeah. Pick apart, that's it, okay, well, thank y'all, I don't get an opportunity to ask a lot, but you know.
That's good, cause they're after, those two guys, they're, Mr. Whitler went by team, everything, about every other day, they asked me when we're gonna get rid of them, so.
They can use it to spare parts, apparently.
I guess, but you take them on, Mr. Whitler.
Yeah.
Yard by the lake, the lake, no, they sent it up, I'm sorry, to the.
Build it one piece at a time, that's it. Think there's solid about that. Okay, let's move on, uh, number seventeen from Mr. Gott. Consider and approve transferring the remaining budget of the election administration. Budget. Minus transfer of voter registrar positions to the county tax office. To a newly named elections department under the supervision of county clerk. Um. So y'all are gonna be splitting this, Rick, you're gonna get some.
Yes, sir.
And Lee will get the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
She's nicely get. He's getting people out there, and she's gonna get the remaining budget to.
Okay.
He's got one full time, one part time, and the position funding tied to the chapter nineteen. Uh, of the Texas Elections Code, that, uh, piece of funding, so that's how we. We've got it split up.
Okay. Alrighty.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon, need a second.
Aye.
Second from Greg, any further discussion? There being none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen from Sheriff. Uh, consider and approve amending the current contract. With El Norte subdivisions to add two additional deputies at the estimated cost of. Two hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars fifty nine cents, Sheriff?
Yes, the subdivision Savannah, and then, uh, contacted us and said they'd like to add two more deputies to the contract, their population. Uh, Mr. Harris, this year, we were told it's around forty five thousand now, and we have eight deputies working the subdivision, this makes us have ten. So.
Court's pleasure.
Make a motion to approve. Sorry.
Motion Greg, second from Leon, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number nineteen from Sheriff. Consider approve K radio and electronic supplying and installing antenna systems for the new Liberty County Sheriff's Office Tower. That's on H G A C contract, number R A zero five dash two one. Fifty nine thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars fifty cents.
Yes, sir, it's had about a model, John, did you have anything on that, or, or the power?
No, sir.
Okay, it's just Motorola's doing it, not, we puke knock was in that part.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Second.
Well, I got everybody wanting to approve that, what a deal. Uh, David, motion David to approve, uh, Bruce made the second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number twenty, consider approve Liberty County Sheriff's Office entering into an agreement with Genesis E Bonds. Uh.
Judge, this time I like the table that it was there.
Thank you.
Give it, work some things out.
Make a motion to table.
Okay.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
You did the second.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, Greg.
Great, so I can do.
Yeah. I thought you said, give me just a second, yeah.
No, no. Y'all are getting, y'all are getting faster than I can pack it in, so I got it.
Uh, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Number twenty one, Sheriff, consider and approve the purchase of emergency equipment for three. Twenty twenty three Chevrolet Tahos approved by court. On January the tenth, twenty twenty three, from Dana Safety Supply for twenty four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars ninety one cents, Sheriff, or God?
Yeah, yeah, it's just to finish up, being some vehicle, just the crash money we're using from some of the crashes that we've had that were not our fault. And, uh, so we're trying to use that money to, uh, up this some vehicles and replacing ones that's for crash.
Make a motion to approve. So, motion from David, second from Bruce. Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty two, precinct one, Commissioner. Uh, consider and approve our local agreement by between Liberty County Precinct one and City of Devers. And this is just your normal renewal, Bruce?
Yes, sir, it's just a renewal for this year semester.
Motion to approve.
Motion from David, and second from Greg, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Three. Consider and approve assignment of contract for security services at the Office of the Tax Assessor Collector. We pray Star Protection, uh, Matthew?
Yes, so, uh, the tax office, uh, security contract has been held by, uh, Marine Services, I believe, is what their name is. Uh, we entered in a contract in September of twenty one. We've been doing month to month since it expired until this past September. Uh, and now Ray Star, I think Ray Star's been the one who's actually performing the work all along, they've been in subcontract.
Okay.
But now they're asking to, uh, you know, have a contract assigned and then form. I, I see no issues, it, it's in compliance with the existing contracts. This, yeah, that's worse.
Okay, brother Rick?
It's more of a, um. An amendment to be able to pay Ray Star directly, it's the same personnel, in fact, the, uh, the guy who's. Our security every day is the one that's always been there, uh, even with Marine, but, um. Unfortunately, I mean, the original owner of Marine passed away last year, and, uh, so. They kind of had a little struggle between the owners, former owners. Uh, kids versus this guy, so we've been paying Marine and then they've been paying him, so now. But he's been there, he's got the insurance, he, you know, he's got the experience, everything's the same, it's just now we can write the checks. Directly to Ray Star, uh, rather than they can do that, you know, that little side.
Security license and everything?
Yes, everything's the same, uh, like I said, we're dealing with the same, this guy was part owner of it. Um, so he's basically been there all along, and, uh, we've had nothing but good. Service from him, and he has an additional person that he brings in, in fact, uh, when we did the Cleveland. Last week in January. We had the wiggle room to actually take on a little more time, so we wisely. They had two security on at the same time, we had the one in Liberty, and then we had the one in Cleveland, and also with the help of the constable. Uh, up there, but we had actually. Four tax office people, we had a security yard, and we had two constables. And basically it went the smoothest that I've ever seen an operation in Cleveland. Not that we had to do that every day, but with the amount of volume and everything we had. Didn't have any problems, I mean, but the crowd control was good. Everything was processing good, so, uh, we did, you know, we had that extra third person, of course, that's the county gave us. But then we also sent someone just to keep the money flowing, so by five o'clock, we had all the money in the bank. Last year, we were watching the clock to try to get the money to the bank in time, all that stuff, so. Went a lot smoother, and we're still gonna be under our fifty thousand, even by using the extra.
Yeah.
You know, the extra personnel, so we do have two people that we can rely on, and sometime he pinches in. When, you know, when the one that's not in Liberty, so it's worked good. I think, you know, continuation's the same hourly rate, they haven't asked for any increases. Still paying them like twenty three dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And he, that's a, that's a deal.
Okay.
You know, for what we got, so. This is just technicality, bill, paying directly, do the two step.
Are you okay with all that? Right, and Tim, y'all okay? Good, Matthew, everything good?
Yes.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Leon. Greg, was that a second?
Yes.
Second from Greg, any further discussions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty four. Hmm. From, uh, Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty. And this is discussion only, no action. Uh, will occur regarding the application submitted by Liberty County Solar Project LLC. A business prospect for the proposed grant by Liberty County to send. Prospect of an economic development agreement pursuant to chapter three eighty one. It takes local government code, so we need to go into executive session on this, Matthew. Okay, all right, so, uh.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session, this will be under. Section five five one point zero eight seven. And five five one point zero seven one. And five five one point one two nine. Of the, uh, Texas government code. So we have a motion from Bruce, he's second.
Second.
Second from Greg, on, uh, further discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries, it's now ten. Sixteen. We are moving into executive session. Eleven fifteen. We're back in regular session, and, uh, item up was number twenty four. Uh, again, that was a discussion only, uh, no action item. It was just, uh, executive session for consideration of the, uh, the. Uh, Commissioner's port. Uh, therefore, being no action and being no.
Journey.
All discussion needs motion to adjourn, and as for Bruce, second from David. Any discussion, just in case y'all have discussion about adjourning today. Yeah. Entertainer vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.[1794.81]